Minutoren, bitte riechen Sie sich für die Pflicht.
Ich pflege mich zu dem Flagge der Vereinigten Staaten Amerikas und zu der Republik, von der es stand, eine Nation unter Gott, unmittelbar mit Freiheit und Justiz für alle.
Paul Cuny?
Ich glaube, ich bin hier.
Ich denke, du bist hier. Howie?
There.
Charlie Keel?
Here.
Riley Laraway?
Yep.
Brent Peavy?
Here.
Carol Shannon?
Here.
Dave Torres?
I'm here. Okay. Agenda ist vor uns. Anything to add? Correct? Talk about any agenda. Okay. Seeing none? Consent agenda? Anything to discuss? Seeing nothing?
Move to accept.
Move to accept by Laraway, seconded by outside of the Cuny. Alright, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carries. Okay, we have several appointments to make on the committees. We have planning commission two, three-year terms up. And zoning board of appeals one, three-year term. And Mr. Peavy has already notified me that he would not mind if he was off the zoning committee. So with that in mind and zoning, I'd like to keep Jim Urban, right? Is he, he's gonna stay?
Yeah.
And then to replace Brent would be Marlon Howe. Any problems? Proved by unanimous consent. And then on planning commission, two, three-year terms. We have four people up. I'd like to appoint Dave McGrath, keep him in that same position. And get Jeff Gray reappointed with everything that's going on. So those are the two that I would suggest.
No problem.
Any problems?
Yeah.
Discussion? Okay, that is passed by unanimous consent also. Okay, let's go on to the Board of Ethics appointment. And we have not heard from Mr. Koolen.
That is correct. I know his wife passed away, I think, last year or so.
Is he around?
Yeah. Last I knew, he was still around.
All together.
Yeah, I emailed them, you know, same day, emailed Jim Urban, hey, any interest in staying? And Jim got back, said yep, and I've never heard back from him.
I'll ask for it tomorrow. I'll see him tomorrow?
Yeah.
Because he might just not let us know his mind.
It's not that active.
He's part of a Larry thing too, so. Okay. Okay. Mr. Mannan?
You have my report in your packet, few items I'm gonna touch base on tonight. We have hired a new employee for code enforcement. His name is Jim Durham. I believe he will be at our meeting, at your meeting next month to formally introduce himself to you guys. As I told planning commission, and I think as you know, he's the former chief of police in the village of Breckenridge. And I did tell the planning commission that Lake Isabella has had a good run at coaching talent from Breckenridge, so hopefully that'll continue.
That's good.
The planning commission has fully reviewed the second draft of the zoning code update in a public hearing, has been scheduled for July 26. I heard from the folks at Eagle last week. They have a meeting this week. They've not seen any issues on the Lake Isabella North agreement. You know, a few wording changes here or there, but nothing of substance that would delay it. We had a really good conversation. One of the things that they brought up is that, you know, they're seeing a lot of staff retirement turnover right now. And they were hoping that this would be something that we would be able to work with the health department to maybe have them send sanitation people to the area to become familiar with the code and that type of stuff. Because, you know, we actually are doing it right here in Isabella County. And it would be, I think, beneficial for other agencies to come and see how it's done here and how we work together and that kind of stuff. So yeah, we'd be totally open to that, so. After the last meeting, we did purchase a mower. We bought it from Doug's, state local. The alternative was from Hudson, aka Bader, in Rosebush. It was a little bit less expensive, but it was more of a high-end residential as opposed to a commercial unit. Doug's gave us a great deal. I think we had like 25% off that were Republican, I mean. So that's been out and doing, doing its thing quite well. Jerry loves it, far more efficient in what he's doing. Fireworks, we have received at the office, $5,695 in donations. Peavy graciously offered to cover the distance difference to our $8,000 mark. We have received $2,330 online for a total of $8,025. He is off the hook.
We don't have to give him the 25.
No.
More spend.
You were hoping for the 25.
We got, we have thank you cards made. We're gonna start getting those out when I get back next week from vacation. But things are going smoothly with that so far. I did meet with Row on May 31st to discuss the drainage plan discussion that we had on the Toldwater Road area. They have not sent a proposal back yet, but I would anticipate that by the July meeting. We had a good discussion on kind of what the goals are gonna be and what the kind of big picture we're looking at to get out of there. You may have remembered, or blocked it from your memory, a while ago, Isabella County sent over an agreement for the council to consider, for the village to help with monitoring the water system. The council did not act on that. But I believe a suitable alternative has been found. There is a new resident in the village who is a water operator. He's come from Quentin's diagonally. He now works for the village of Edmore at their water plant.
Wait a minute, please. Just asking.
I put him in touch with them. And I got a call yesterday from the manager of Edmore saying, hey, he said he's gonna go work for them on the side, what's going on? So I assume he and they met and got together. So I'm explaining that, you know, they really need someone just to stop by on their way home and record the levels of phosphorus and chlorine. And, you know, for him on his way home from work, that would be perfect. It's not out of his way. He lives on that side of the lake, so.
It's work and play, yeah.
Yeah, we're good to go.
I'm very happy.
Last but not least, we did submit our M category B grant application on June 15th. As you remember from our discussion last month, looking at a Newton Surface, Queensway, DeCosa, Portion of Bundy, and then Mill and Phil, and Clubhouse, and Dolph Horse here. And that is all I have for you. That's all. Anything for Jim?
Okay, thank you. Sherman Township Report.
Just a couple of quick things. We had two meetings yesterday, or we got our front meeting prior to our normal meeting. I would probably go, we had about five different things we discussed about spending money on. My personal choices, and I think what came out is probably the top three. The non-our Sherman Fire Department would be one thing that we're looking at. We can donate money for any emergency services, that kind of stuff. So we're gonna work with the fire chief to get a little list of, of cost of thing that he would like to do, when he wants to spend the money on. Second thing would be, the, there's talk about putting any walking path all the way around the park there in Wademan. You know, with baseball diamonds and stuff like that are at. I know Denise has done a little bit of research on it right now. She got some rough ball prices, but we're gonna ask her to go forward and get some, request a proposal, things like that to do that. We're thinking about doing the pathway around there, maybe even putting up some lighting so you can walk at night. Or dark ground, stuff like that as well too, maybe provide some wifi services there too. The third thing I think that was most popular is there's some big need for road repairs right in downtown Wademan. Not on the main water roof, which is that county road, but some of the little side intersections and stuff like that, they need to get some stuff done though. So nothing was made until final decision. That was pretty much the conversation that came down to, each of us contributing what we thought would be a good way to spend our money on that stuff, so. The other thing would be, the, we had the full library board, actually in our meeting last night. The library and the Sherman Township Board have entered into an agreement where the library want to look into expanding. They've got a ton of money in their account based on the taxes that they collect. So we had a motion in our, entering into an agreement to want to expand the library in Wademan. So specifically expand the building and other services with it too. We're also looking at applying for an election grant, get an additional laptop that will help us with the elections. Now that we got the two precincts, which you had to get to see in August if you didn't see it in May already, you know. But that way you'll be able to walk in if you're a Lake Isabella resident in Sherman Township. And we filtered out that you're one voting area. Everybody else for Sherman Township has their own voting area as well. So we'll have an extra laptop to do that, and we have our AV ballot tab computer will be in the back room. And it'll have its own machine, computer, everything else to do, to do all that stuff. And then just a couple of reviews here. Sawmill Days, July 8th, 9th, and 10th will be in Wademan. And as a reminder, they'll have the breakfast, I forgot they have one day or one day off for the breakfast that you would ask about before, so. I will get you that information when I remember it.
Thank you. That's it.
Alright. I only had one question. When you were talking about the, the trail, is it gonna stay at Mitchell Park?
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
The trail there that you were talking about, is it gonna stay on the Mitchell Park property, or are you gonna expand out farther?
Right now, what the talk was to do on the outside, all the way around the baseball diamonds and all the way down itself, and the park, it will stay in the park area within the roads. It won't cross over any of the roads or any of that stuff. It's free now.
Okay.
That's just the plan, but that's, I think what we're gonna get a pricing on from there.
Okay. I was just curious if it was staying on the park property, and at this time it is.
Yep, as of right now, that's the plan.
Sure.
L I P O A report. Did you get anything from them?
Four members here from the L I P O A, Mr. Dolph and Doc.
We had a, the only thing I have to report is I think we had a very productive meeting, liaison meeting for us to go forward with our lake bottom restoration and getting some funds for beds, so. I think it, I'm cautiously optimistic that the people will see it that way. Enough. We got a hell of a salesmen job to do though.
Question on that one, is it in combat as far as the agreement, has it gone over to their attorneys?
Yeah, it, yeah, I was gonna talk about it.
Oh, okay.
This is number one, but we got it back yesterday and was sent to them yesterday for them to ship to their attorney.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Let's go to public hearings. Resolution 22, 2022 oh eight and 22, 23.
You're up, Mr. Manager. You have one public hearing on the agenda tonight is for the 2023, 2022, 23 budget capital improvement plan and millage rate to be levied in support of the budget. Also known as the General Appropriations Act. Notice of the public hearing was published on June 5th. This is after it was introduced at the council meeting on May 17th. The finance committee initially reviewed the document on June 9th. They met again on June 14th, amended and recommended the document you have for you tonight. Going over the, the highlights. Looking at the budget amendments, which are in new business, but these numbers are those numbers in terms of the ending 21, 22 revenue. Expenses and projected ending balance June 30th of this year. The general fund is projected to end the year with $561,328 for the current fiscal year. Major Street, $543,000 and change, Local Street, $143,000, and the sewer fund, $990,000. Major Street due in large part to us pushing the El Camino project from this year to next, which is just June to July in the real world, but it's one budget year to the next. So you will see that reflected in the numbers for 2022 and 23. We have proposed or projected $500,925 in general fund revenue with $559,907 in expenses. Major Street, $357,500 in revenue, $571 in expenses. $117,000 in change in revenue in local and $127 in expenditures. Now, one of the things that we went back to doing this year that we didn't do during the COVID year was if you look at your budget, we not only give you this year's, you know, proposed, we also project next year's spending out as well. So we're able to give you the next year's projected ending balance on all those funds as well. That's in the document. That's something that we've always done, and we base it on our capital improvement plan, so we try to make sure that we're budgeting those things in accordingly. So for this year, and I can't see that too well, the capital improvement plans that finance committee reviewed. Village Hall carpet, we're gonna replace the carpet in this room in the hallway. We're not gonna do the offices. We'll hardwood floor on top of this. Annual repaint of our traffic markings, the yellow and white lines, that'll be done this fall is what we're looking at. A concrete pad for the recycling bins over at DPW, we get asked for that quite frequently. It gets pretty messy in the rain and the winter. There's the El Camino Grande project. The category B grant that we applied for covers half of the next two projects. Slurry Seal project, Queensway, Bundy, DeCosa, the Clubhouse Drive resurfacing. We moved over the next two, or the next item from the current budget year because we're having Mally do the shoulders on El Camino. We want them to do the Channel Drive project roughly the same time, so it didn't make sense to have them come out in June and then come back in July. But we do need to put, grapple down on Channel Drive West in particular. That street was largely left to nature's best wishes over the years, and now that we've amended the building restrictions in that plat, there is development happening there. So we need to actually, you know, make that somewhat probably a road. The cunning software conversion, we've talked about that. We need to replace a couple of the trees and get rid of some of the landscaping and bring in someone to do some trimming on the landscape of their village hall. We've had requests from the public to replace the chairs in the audiences. They are uncomfortable. That was due anyway. We did these chairs last year. Those are the next one. You know, those are original to the building when we built it in 2007, so they're, they're due, they're dated, they're rusty on the bottoms if you look at them.
Was that a mission print from '40, maybe '40?
No. Are we getting the same type of chairs?
Stackable, stackables on the wall.
Those are, those are stackables.
They are. There's, there's better vendors, and we went with just what Kenneth Menards last time. We're gonna go with a vendor. Stackablechairs.com, I think we should press sell. The dog park is in there in terms of a potential project, which you already submitted the grant application for. Now, the budget reflects that project and the fairway, clubhouse, Queensway, DeCosa, and also the grant money coming in for those. So if we don't get the grant money for the dog park, we don't do the dog park. If we don't get the category B, we will reexamine that project and come up with an alternative that might be more budget friendly. You know, when you're looking at a project that, you know, is $130,000 and you could lop on a $68,000 project and get the state to pay for half, it kind of makes sense. But if they're not gonna pick up the tab on half, you know, we will reevaluate that. Last year, category, category B grants came in August, I wanna say. It was one that was made note. And last but not least, the thing that the finance committee actually spent probably a good chunk of time discussing and thinking through alternatives was the code enforcement vehicle situation. And last month, you signed off on $15,000 for a vehicle and mower. We used just under half the mower. And we certainly could still pick up a very used, but still decent vehicle for that purpose. With the price of fuel being what it may, we looked, finance committee looked pretty deep into what our fuel consumption is and how that impacts the fleet that we have right now. And through that discussion, said, you know, it makes way more sense for us to direct ARPA money to buy that vehicle and have that be a tangible asset that the village would own after the expiration of ARPA. So it's not like the sheriff's contract where you're spending it on a service. You do get a benefit out from that, obviously, in public service, but you don't have a benefit on your balance sheet from that. This would be something that would accomplish that goal and also allow us to realize our fleet goals of 15 years, 75,000 miles on a pickup trucks. We won't hit that on the 2019, the way we're using it now. We're fine on the 2010, we should get that right on the number. Which would also be, you know, 2026 at the end of ARPA, and you would also have that vehicle as an option at that time if you needed that to use towards that replacement. As well as the 2010, if you wanted to use that in a trade-in scenario as well. And the village council last year amended upwards our minimum fund balance policy. Those are the minimum fund balances that we, the council has established for the village to keep. And that I am not allowed to draft a budget that would come to you, which happened last month, that has an ending number below $175,000 in general fund, $75,000 in major streets, and $50,000 in local streets. As you can see, we vastly exceed all of those amounts with our current and projected totals for this year and next. General fund is 280% of that go all major streets, 400%, plus local streets, plus 250%. So nowhere close to any of our internal controls that council has set. We only have one debt issue. That was the debt recast that we did early last year. Where we paid down some principal and refinanced to a lower rate, which boy looks really smart today, doesn't he? So as it stands today, going into this fiscal year, we still have $315,000 of debt remaining, which is the debt from building this building, building the salt bar, and buying the DPW property. We merged all of those into one, and we refinanced now twice. So we had initially three separate debt issues on those. We merged them into one, we refi'd, and then we refi'd again to keep that number coming down. So we have a very manageable debt position. The state of Michigan sets your allowable debt limit at, I believe, 10% of your equalized value, and that is discussed on page... 10% of our SEV is, is just over 10 million, because we have an SEV stated worth value of $100,768,900. We are currently sitting at about 3.1% of our allowed statutory debt limit. So you have no risk that if the village voters approve a bond issue this fall, you will not be anywhere near your debt cap. The budget funds our organizational structure with the village council manager and the three departments that we utilize. It does move our DPW labor from a part-time position at 35 hours a week to a full-time hourly 40-hour-a-week position. Includes budgeted for code enforcement officer, please want to work two, two-eight-hour shifts a week, and our airport manager stipend. We also utilize several vendors, obviously the Mally that you know of, but we also get IT services from Wolverine Computer Services out of Lake Isabella. And that is included in the budget under contracted services and general fund. So what it looks like broken down into department funds, expenditures. Village Council has, you know, $6,000 budgeted, and some of that is money that we appropriate every year and typically don't spend. And what that is, is training. But if you look at your budget, the line item page three, you'll see that the council budget shows $1,000 for training and $1,000 for training travel expenses. We always put that in there in case there's a training or conference that you want to go to. The, the policy that the village council has adopted is that before you can go to any other ones, you first have to go through the MML core weekend. And once you've done that, you can go to, you know, any training that is appropriate that the council signs off on, you know, whether that's MML convention or whatever. Public safety at $58,000 does reflect $15,000 for July through December of the optional overtime agreement with the sheriff's department. Code enforcement obviously reflects the additional personnel and also the added software expense that will entail adding a second user. Streets, $499,000 preservation of streets for the major street network. You know, you've got this year's El Camino project in there, you've got the proposed Bundy, Queensway, DeCosa, Clubhouse grant project in there as well. So I mean, that, that's a big number, obviously, because that's a lot of work to do in a fiscal year. Local street, you know, local street's still pretty healthy even at $105,000 after this year. You know, it's as healthy as it's gonna be with what we get from the state. We have 18 and a half miles of streets in our local street network, and we get $116,000 from the state. And not a lot of money, you know, especially after getting them plowed. So with that, the finance committee has met and reviewed this, and I'm sure would also be happy to answer any questions that you may have. We've received no calls, questions, or emails prior to the public hearing. And you have to say a public here tonight. If they have comments, they do.
Public hearing is open, 7:27. Questions? Any other questions? Public hearing closed, 7:27 plus 30. Chair, entertain a motion.
We can discuss.
Sure.
I'd like to just add a couple things.
Okay.
When we're moving the guy, and I have no objection to moving him over at full time, but are we required to give him health insurance then?
Yeah. Cause he's full time. He is gonna take the buyout.
So what's the buyout?
We offer a $350 a month buyout for a family policy, 200 for a couple, and 100 for a single, I think. So he, I talked to him about that before we went down the road. He said he would absolutely take the buyout, so.
And then I mean, yes, I'm a little confused on the vehicle for code enforcement. Again, I don't have a problem with the $35,000. I thought at one time we were talking code enforcement needed a, either an SUV or a pickup truck to be up higher. Can you get something like that for $35,000?
An Escape, an Escape Hybrid. We also get it at the government discount.
Right.
So our, I talked with Signature Ford, who deals with the government contract. The starting price on the My Deal contract for an Escape Hybrid last year was $27,900 before options, so.
Do you think hybrid will be that much better than this state's case?
Yeah, the numbers that we looked at at finance and put together, we can do code enforcement for 175 gallons of gas a year in the hybrid. And the budget reflects the price of gas at $6 a gallon in diesel at 7. That's a, that's a huge change.
Now, see, we have an Escape down in Florida. It's just a regular Escape, and my wife, it's just, she loves it. She loves that vehicle. I'm not crazy about hybrids. I'm not saying I would go with that. I'm just not crazy about hybrids, but.
We have one. That was a little bit weird before we bought it. I talked with the folks that we... The folks that we deal with, the the dealership we have, you know, our family tried to buy thirty cars from them, so I mean, we get, we get the the real talk from them. They said they've never had one come in because of a battery issue. They've never had to replace a battery in any of them. Um, and ours is the regenerative braking hybrid, so it's not a plug-in. So it still has a regular gas tank, you fill it up, and then it has to brake and accelerate it, and that's a hybrid. That's a hybrid vehicle, and that's the one we were looking at.
I'm not gonna say that. I'm not crazy about, but I'm not gonna object. I just.
Here to there, my house to here, I can get sixty miles to the gallon of that. So that's where, that's where it's gonna make its money is in the village where you've got a lot of stop and go and most speed driving, so it can stay in that electric vehicle. As opposed to zipping down the freeway at cruise control. You're not gonna see as good of a mileage there. We went to Kalamazoo a couple of weeks ago and we got forty of the highway. You know, so.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
And I think the thing too that we really looked at was the amount of less wear and pay that we're gonna see on a pickup. Because we can use that vehicle for the running around. That has to run in the mouth, let's get this or that. We can use that vehicle instead of a pickup. And so it'll save those vehicles.
Well, how do we do that? Because I thought part of the problem was because of accounting, we had to have separate vehicles or stuff like that. Now we're gonna. Not ready to use it all and run around.
Still, he was a fair though.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, a lot of times if we're. Going to the county building or whatever, those are, those are administrative expenses that we could do out of the the hybrid. Right. For usually a pickup truck that gets eleven miles a gallon.
Yeah, I'm not objecting to answering questions.
What color would you prefer?
What color is yours?
White. We were thinking yellow.
Down in Florida, all they had is black, black on black. And I go, why would, down in Florida? And I've talked to several dealerships, black on black, all black on black. It was rare to find a white.
They might have been in the the sale item, the hurts fires out there.
No, I did also ask the association because their, both their vehicles are white. So we're, we're not gonna get white, I can tell you that. We're not gonna get red, so.
Yeah, I don't care what color.
I'm, I'm looking at the best color for resale value.
Don't get wrong.
Any other questions? Discussion.
Only thing I want to say is thanks for the finance committee and thanks for Tim for getting this all done. It's not an easy task.
I commend Tim on the presentation that if people in our community take a look at this, it's easy to follow.
Yes.
If they can read, they're gonna read down through this and start to make some sense until it gets so much, because it is in-depth.
Yeah.
But they can actually read this whole thing and understand a little bit better where our community runs with our finances. Good job.
Hey, I had a lot of free time lately, so tons of time to work on.
Was that between two and three in the morning?
Yeah.
Okay. Cheryl, let me name a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, report of twenty twenty-two dash oh eight. And twenty twenty-two oh three twenty-three.
Okay, motion made by Kiel to accept resolution twenty-two oh eight, twenty-two twenty-three, General Appropriations Act. Is there a second? Seconded by Davis. Further discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Charlie Kiel.
Yes.
Robert Laraway.
Yeah.
Brent B V.
Yes.
Carol Shannon.
Yes.
Paul Kenny.
Yes.
Al Davis.
Yes.
Dave Torreson.
Yes. Okay, we have a budget. First and two public comment periods. Any comments, public comments? Name and address for the record.
My name is Jeff Gray, one thousand nine McQueen up here at Lake Isabella. Um, as you know, myself and David Grant are pretty much the two people who attend this meeting and the LA P U A board meetings. Um, if I'm lucky to win in August and November, obviously, I won't be able to make the village council meetings since county commissions at the same time. But I, at the LA P U A last meeting that we had there, um, had made a request or a challenge and said, hey. These two boards never go to each other's meetings. They rarely ever show up to each other. If I'm not going. And David Grant doesn't make it to me that we're not showing the rest of the village. Intermainly, we want them to do, so, um, I put that challenge out. Thank you, John, very much for hearing me and showing up tonight. For doing this, but I would like to issue the same request here to the council that. Some of you guys start to attempt to make the LA P U A board meetings on Wednesdays. So just the day after a planning mission, so to me, I think it's a great thing to have both boards. Have at least one person present.
Listened interesting.
Yeah, vested interest in both boards, showing each other's support and loyalty back and forth, so. Um, I would really like to see you guys do the same and have some council members show up at every meeting. And I will keep pushing and asking the LA P U A board to do the same thing, um, to show up again. Thank you, John, for doing it for tonight, so. I hope you guys develop doing that for, to get the best for both, so.
Yeah, so public comment. Okay, so now we'll go to existing business. Mr. Man.
Uh, first time under existing business is a brief update on where things are at with the, uh. Bond project and joint project association. Everyone received the first newsletter article a couple of weeks ago now. Had good feedback from that, had some questions, not had anybody come in, you know, ranting and raving at our position. Uh, we've been working on the updated frequently asked questions based on some of the discussions that we've been having, um, especially from that joint meeting we had on June first. And then, as already discussed a little bit, um, last week, the association and the villagers on committee met. Uh, they presented a handful of items that they would like to see in an agreement. There were no issues on our end anything that they had asked for. Um, I went back and made a first draft of that agreement and shipped it off to our attorney that day. Um. Said, oh, how soon do you need it? I said, I only need a favor. I need you to get it done soon. So it was done Monday. And I forwarded it to George and he forwarded it on to Marion O'Neal, my understanding, so. Ball rolling in that end, um, yeah, I thought it was a, uh. Two really positive means last two days that control organizations had, so.
And. Police.
So as discussed last month, the, uh, council was interested in. Possibly having a second village proposal on the November ballot. This one. Um, would be for a dedicated village for the sheriff's department patrol. Um, my understanding of what the discussion was last month was to focus on a continuation of our current optional overtime agreement. And had, uh, you know, with the different possible village rates to consider. On that, and that is in your package. So if, uh, based on our current village, or actual value, I'm sorry. A quarter mil would bring in twenty-four thousand, three hundred dollars roughly. A third of a mill, a mill, thirty-two thousand, a half mil, forty-eight thousand, six hundred. Uh, the sheriff's department, um, this year is most likely to be under thirty thousand with us, just based on their availability. Due in large part to them. Staff, you know, that was one of the things that from last month's discussion, the council considered was. You know, it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to try and get them to provide additional full-time officer when they're already down seven full-time officers on the roll. So that is the work I've done on that one. Um, if you guys are still interested in this. You could give me the direction of how to fill in those blanks and have a full resolution next month. I'm having a little trouble with this. The sheriff's department's already said that they can't go on some emergency calls because of fuel. Now, they apparently got funded again, refunded. But if they're down seven officers, I don't quite understand how they can run out of gas. I mean, I don't understand. No.
That was my question too, we got salary for the benefits.
Yeah. And 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 that's not our bailiwick, but I just had a hard time with that number, but. Going along with that, though, just to finish my thought, is, uh. I would think the the half mil would be what we want to do, because if we're gonna try to do this for. Hey, he's gonna be president for two more years, two and a half more years. That's just the way it's gonna be, unless something unfortunate happens. So I think we have to ask for what we think we'll need, because we want to fund it. If we can, because I don't want to be cut out because they don't have the fuel. If we could use some of that for that or whatever. I don't know. I'm just spitballing.
I don't, I don't want to go too short and then have to go back again to ground.
Or just cover out a general fund, what we have to do.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, they have definitely been out here, because I have seen it almost every single day at most. I've talked to the sergeant, I've talked to four different patrol officers. All very pleasant, asked if I had any questions or concerns, just, they didn't know I was on the council or anything, they're just. Stopping by, saying hi, you know, because I was out watering the lawn, that's why I see them so much, because I'm out there quite a bit. I thought they were all very pleasant. Uh, I did bring up a concern that people. Did complain that now they're getting tickets, and I let them know that my feelings was, is, hey. Let them off the tickets for a long time, you know, in my eyes, and they should know that they gotta slow down and and do that. And one officer said to me, and it was kind of funny, was that when we were on Lake Isabella time? Or was it because of our general patrol time? This is, you know, everything's getting blamed on Lake Isabella. You know, and it isn't all Lake Isabella. Our time out here, we do spend time out here. He said, believe it or not, we do spend time out here, that has nothing to do with the agreement. And I said, you know, I have an idea, pieces, and I gave it today, you know.
One and. Yeah.
I thought they were very good. I, I, I appreciate it being.
Oh, because you gave it in the direction that it was mostly stop them educated. Initially, absolutely. I mean, for a while, because it's kind of new. I mean, you, you went from having two years of almost no traffic enforcement. You didn't want to correct, come out gun blazing at day one, right?
But they're all very.
You know, and going back to the the fuel thing. That was framed very poorly from their administration, their department, in that. All they were doing was really adopting what Michigan State Police RBU. That is what the state police do. Instead of saying. You know, starting their press release was, you know, here's all the things that we're currently doing and will not be impacted, and now we're gonna adopt this best practice of the state police. That's absolutely not how that came off, but no, that was the intent of that.
Yeah, that guy had to be, right now. For the first. Oh, we don't know six months that we have yet. About what's it cost us per month? Let's go per month.
It costs us what they're willing to take.
Yeah, yeah, because I mean, they're only coming a lit, much less than what we had asked for originally. And where I'm going with this is how much money do we really spend on this? Because it's less, we budgeted more, but it's not coming off that way, because they don't have the staff.
Okay.
And so, I mean, I look at the half a mil too, but maybe it's, it's working pretty goddamn good right now. If it stays this way. Could we live with a lesser village?
Through ni, end of April, it's, they've done nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. So you got May, June. So you, yeah, so that's why I went with fifteen in the budget, because, right, you know, I think that's a safe number. And they started in January, started in January. And and I know one, one officer in particular takes a lot of the shifts. I've seen him out pretty frequently, which.
Well, the sergeant told me, he says, I generally do not patrol.
Mm-hmm.
But he says, if people turn it down, if I have an opportunity, I, he says, I do get it, but he says, you very rarely see me out here.
Yeah.
Because if they get it, you know, they have first choice. But he says, I'll be very honest with you. I like the patrols out here. And he says, it's, it gives me a little extra money, and he says, and it's, it's, it's very relaxing.
And they're getting money, enough money, that they can pay the fuel allowances for that vehicle at that time.
Yes.
I mean, somebody said all they're doing is sitting oil.
Yeah, all they're here to.
Yeah. Yeah.
So for four months, it's nine thousand dollars? Four and a half months, yeah. So.
So four, nine thirty.
Twenty-seven.
Oh, four months, yeah, twenty-seven, yeah.
So that.
We could get by with a quarter mil and you could.
Or a third.
I'd rather use the general funds, I'd rather go the middle of the thirty-two. Split the difference.
Thirty-three.
I'd rather do that.
Yeah, I didn't think.
And I, it's gonna be a sale, because we got another village coming.
Sure.
So I mean, we got two of them out there, and I think the talk I hear from people, this is helping us. You know, we know we got somebody here. It's keeping some people out that might be filtering in otherwise. And, uh, doing some.
When you.
Um, are these figures like annual number that we generate from the mills or a total for the term of two years? I don't know, I would set it up kind of how it is right now. I think it's a good happy medium between having our own dedicated officer and. Or nothing. I haven't heard that many complaints about people at speed and get pulled over. Pretty much deserved, like, I haven't heard of. Any other stops.
I've heard. Place from driving.
Obviously, you know, like, first, you must have spent pretty. What happens if this, say, we do fifty, and we have fifty thousand dollars, and the sheriff's department only picks up twenty-five grand worth of overtime?
So the, the way a village like this would work is you would, you would pay the year out of your general fund and then backfill general fund. So whatever they take, you're gonna pay, and then you're gonna recover that the next year of the village. Because you're not gonna see, if this village gets adopted, you won't see that come in. Until middle of twenty-three.
Right, yeah.
So you're not gonna see any of that come in on this budget year that you just adopted. So whatever you spend this budget year, that's what you're gonna want. To appropriate that village rate up to for that year.
But Tim, and the question I think with, I mean, it's, let's just say that we spent twenty-five thousand what we. Have, that got a mill approved at thirty-three, so it'd be thirty-two seventy-five. What has that money, the difference between what?
The, the language says up to. So you pay out your general fund, and then you figure out what you have. Okay. And then that military, whether it's a third or point two eight.
Whatever it is.
That's what you would backfill that amount.
That makes a lot more sense. I guess I'm now, I'm even more strong going to the middle. You know, so we have it, but then it, it could be less.
Bob?
I'm still not sure it can be enough. Hold on, it's the roof.
So you were leaning towards what I was leaning towards, but the half.
I agree, the middle, when I thought, the way it sounds, you know, that would be, that would cover. One, three, three, three. You know. Especially if they're, they're short and we can't get the time up here, we expect, you know, I think.
I'm fine with eight point three three mil.
Okay.
Bob says it's gonna be the middle one. Yeah, the middle of the room. Fine, looking around, it's five to two.
I mean, technically, it's more than, you know, what we're spending now. We're up in the coverage a little bit. Little baby steps, yeah. How it goes, it's not, you're not talking about doubling the lease enforcement so fast.
I mean, it's, it's pretty comparable to where you're gonna be at right now.
Yeah.
And probably with the price of fuel, it's probably gonna come in pretty close to that, in terms of hours you see out of the road.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's your direction.
Alright.
Alright, new business. Resolution twenty-two nine. Budget amendments.
The finance committee as part of their work over the last few weeks. Present to you year end budget amendments and. The current fiscal year that ends next week, next Thursday, alright? Yeah, somewhere out there. We are projecting general fund revenue exceeding expenses of $53,991. Make street revenue over expenditures of $103,033,33 cents. Local streets of $20,212. We already discussed the year end numbers. Things were, were pretty good this year for us. We show, you know, obviously an increase in our revenue sharing, our increase in act fifty-one because of the increase in our census number. So those all have a population component.
I was just going to say the, the population, what did they take, pick us at?
One thousand eight hundred and twenty-one, twenty-nine.
With a thousand homes.
Wow, let's split them off.
Yeah, a lot of us like my nephews had five kids.
Yeah.
Makes up for it, four kids, makes up for it. Okay.
We're at BBS today, saw them all. Alright. Trying to find anything that is substantially different than what was originally.
But I don't think it's pretty much the same. Make it go.
Yeah, I mean, you can see that we'd originally appropriated in the budget 40,000 for the sheriff's road patrols. You know, that, that's coming in at fifteen is what we're putting aside for that, just to be safe for the rest of this fiscal year. We've already spent ninety-seven hundred. You know, the street funds. We didn't have to spend any of our. We did have to spend a little bit more in terms of the, the 200 hours from last winter. So we, we had a December bill for plowing and then we paid the contract in January. You know, we are probably have sixty hours still good on that going into the fall. Uh, salt, you know, we're pretty close to our salt budget. We typically go through 200 tons a year. But nothing, nothing really exciting, different sewer fund, you know, we budget fifteen, twenty bucks a year in interest. And then we pay for the ECOY testing out of the lake from it in the summer.
Any further discussion or questions? General entertaining motion, resolution twenty-two oh nine. I'll make a motion for that. Motion made by Keel to accept resolution twenty-two oh nine. End of budget amendments.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Shannon. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Robert Laraway.
Yeah. Yes.
Carol Shannon, yes. Paul Kuni?
Yes.
Al Davis?
Yes.
Charlie Keel.
Yeah.
And Dave Torres.
Yes. Resolution twenty-two ten. Compensation. Adjustments.
Well, the final item of business is the finance committee reviewed during their meetings earlier this month was the villages compensation plan. They were concerned, interested about that in light of inflation and also the current labor market. And asked me to present to them, you know, an amended, slung down version, particularly on the salary to end of what that could look like. Cause the general consensus of everyone was that the nine step plan there was far too cumbersome for our size organization. So you've got a one, two, three level on the salary end. And the note there says that, you know, if either of these positions become vacant or open, the posted range would be in the one to three range unless the council says otherwise. So if you are replacing a village manager, you're going to advertise fifty-five to sixty. You're replacing the deputy finance person thirty-seven to forty, thirty-seven, five to forty. And we put in there the, kind of the percentage of those salaries to the other relationship. Uh, we did also, the finance committee also amended upwards DPW labor rates. Cause that is a competitive field right now and also our total enforcement position. Uh, we did bump up the starting pay potentially for an office assistant, that type of stuff. Seasonal help, you know, we haven't used seasonal help for a long time. But all in all, the, this was a wide percentage of the finance committee and I think what they were comfortable with. Any questions?
I'm taking it that the compensation schedule, the first one is what they have and made adjustments in the second page. Just wanted to make sure you got those questions.
General entertaining motion. I'll make a motion to accept resolution two thousand twenty-two dash ten. Motion made by Keel to accept twenty-two ten. Seconded by P. For the discussion. Seeing none, we'll go.
Rand Peavy?
Yes.
Carol Shannon, yes. Paul Kenny?
Yes.
Al Davis?
Yes.
Robert Laraway, Lar away, can't talk. Thank you, sir. Charlie Keel?
Yes.
Dave Torres?
Yes. Single partial assessment.
The last item is actually two resolutions because neither property cut the grass.
Okay.
Big shot. The first one is resolution two thousand and twenty-two eleven to recover $116.50 of costs incurred to mow eleven thirty-seven clubhouse drive. The owner of eleven thirty-seven clubhouse drive has passed away, passed away last March. So okay, we said, obviously there are part notices to the address on file. Obviously, he's that, he'll be able to get the grass. So Jerry mowed that one yesterday, I believe, and the other one was yesterday as well. So the first resolution would be to set the process in motion to recover those costs at eleven thirty-seven clubhouse.
Just for that.
Just that one. Then there's another resolution after this one.
Any discussion? Okay, general entertaining motion.
Well, yeah, I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Davis to accept resolution twenty-two eleven.
Yep.
And outside, seconded by Kuni. Further discussion? We'll go please.
Carol Shannon, yes. Paul Kenny?
Yes.
Al Davis?
Yes.
Charlie Keel?
Yes.
Robert Laraway?
Yes.
Rand Peavy?
Yes.
Dave Torres?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously.
And next up is ten thirty-six Portova Lane, which you should be familiar with because this is probably the third special assessment we've had on mowing the grass. Uh, this mowing bill came to $135.25. That reflects one and three quarter hours of Jerry time and our equipment. The other one was a whole and a half.
And that's twenty-two twelve?
Twenty-two twelve, yep.
That's always on there, is there a?
Yeah, we would only mow it if there's a hole. So ten thirty-six has a single wide mobile hole on it.
I just seen the picture of the building. I couldn't tell if that was, or maybe that is a mobile home, isn't it? Yeah, I guess.
No, it was mobile.
Can't see it behind the jungle.
Okay. Okay.
Have we selected any of the special?
Got some on the tax bill. That's where they're jobbing. This one, yeah.
Okay, general entertaining motion.
So wait.
Motion made by Laraway to accept resolution twenty-two dash twelve, seconded by.
Al second.
Davis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Paul Kenny?
Yes.
Al Davis? Charlie Keel?
Yes.
Robert Laraway?
Yes.
Rand Peavy?
Yes.
Carol Shannon, yes, and Dave Torres.
Yes.
Do I have a question along cutting you in general? And I'm going to mention the thing, the place, but I'm not, I'm not saying we should go after or anything like that. It's just, it's just curious. Where it's on clubhouse drive across the street from the lake where, I can't think of the guy's name. Used to be on all everything, state airport and everything. He left, he sold his house.
Elmer, led better?
Yes, led better. I didn't want to say what it was called. Anyway, I'm sure up by the house, they're probably cutting the grass. They used to always cut with a tractor and cut everything. And people said to me, I shouldn't say people, one person asked me, how come the village doesn't go after him for cutting the grass? And I said, well, that's a good question, but you know, that's a big lot. That isn't just his house. Maybe he's cutting up by the house and that's all he's required. I don't know. And this, this reminded me of that question. I never did ask it, Tim.
Didn't you say that you only cut the grass over its homes and?
Right, but if the house is on a whole lot, it's on a whole separate parcel. I don't know if it is or not though.
The house is on a separate parcel, correct?
Oh, it is?
Yeah. Well, what better is house and garage are separate from the.
That's what I was.
Okay, they were when, when that worked.
Elmer loves to ride on a tractor.
Yeah, but it was all back till last year, that person was doing his sell and I said to him, I said.
He's moved out, he's on.
The guy that bought it from Elmer, I believe, has moved out.
Yeah.
He's moved, I believe, back to Elmer.
Oh.
He's got all that, everything's for sale.
Oh, yeah. That's interesting.
He may have combined it all. His house always was separate. It was this weird triangle type piece, but now it's all one.
Well. The short answer is, we really want to get into.
Well, I don't think we do because if that's, if it's a separate house, you just got a big lot just like everybody else. So, you know, I can't see us getting into, I just didn't have the answer for the person, you know? And I was meaning to talk to Tim.
Is around the house mode?
Pardon?
Is around the house mode?
Then I didn't, I couldn't tell.
Yeah, yeah, we ridden bikes back in there.
Yeah, see, I haven't gone up in there.
Okay. Alright. Of the comments.
Well, cook, we, we were at Sherman Township yesterday, breaking.
What'd you name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Tim Fox, six, X, one, three, West Little Turtle Way. And we were at Sherman Township and Frank Engler got up and sort of explained what happened with Sheriff Maine. And he said he did a Facebook something or another and it went viral on him, didn't even intend. And everything, the commissioners, they all were going to do it and they're taking, like you said, the from the people that aren't working for him, they're taking those salaries and putting them out. So there was never going to be a shortage of gas for the cars and his processor, his procedure for doing calls, he put in place two years ago. So nothing was sort of new, the, just the news just took it and blew it out of.
National news.
Yeah, so that, that's, and I'm trying to help the council out here. I've got a couple of pieces of property up for sale and I've been talking to Sheriff Maine, buy him from me, so.
Alright.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, the council comments.
Thank you to all the donated or required ones.
Yeah, thanks, Brett, thanks you.
Yes. We thank you for what was still there.
Okay. Announcements, Tim, next meeting?
July the nineteenth. Finance commission is not meeting the week prior to you guys, or meeting the week after. That's to give me some more time to do the public notices for the resulting portion of the comprehensive update. On, cause I'm not in this week. My contract does say I have to be here for these meetings, so that's why I'm here tonight. Otherwise I wouldn't be, no offense.
It does, every contract says you have to be here.
My contract says shall attend all village council meetings.
And with you two, I have vacation, you have to.
I've missed one council meeting in eighteen years because my wife had a baby.
Yeah, I remember.
When I seen that you had in the thing, I said, well, Tim's not going to be here, you know?
Okay, Tim, if you're going to have to be at that meeting, you should have been at the point.
Which one?
He was dressed in a real nice outfit.
Standard.